2016 zoning board of appeals hearing is coming to order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Mendez?
Present.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Mr. Gisono, absent. Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mrs. Curley?
Present.
Mr. Kalman?
Present.
Mrs. Brown?
Present. We have a quorum. The first order of business this evening is the minutes.
So we'll be accepted as read, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Kalman to accept the minutes from the previous meeting of July 26, 2016, seconded by Mr. Cole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Second order of business tonight, we have three matters that are being continued. We have 73 North Common Street. We have the Denquory Road matter and Glen Court. They are being continued due to the absence of the attorney for the petitioner. 73 North Common Street is going to September 6th. And Denquory Road, August 16th. And Glen Court is August 16th. Is there any questions with the board?
I don't have a question.
The chairman says, "Is there anything you have in common?"
It's September 6th, 2016.
How many other cases do we have next week?
I don't remember. It's September 6th, August 16th. Or August 19th?
16.
16.
How many cases for next week?
Three new ones, plus these two. And one continued, Alley Street.
So sick of that, yeah.
Is there a motion to continue those three matters to those respective dates?
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Kalman to continue the three matters to those respective dates, seconded by Mrs. Curley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This is the second time this has been continued. I've taken time off on work. I don't understand.
I apologize, but the attorney for the petitioner is ill. And so the request was made so that he could be present to represent the petitioner. And so...
What cases are...
Which case are you referring to?
Uh, Loop, Denquory Road.
Okay. And that is one of the ones that the petitioner's attorney is ill.
Did they get a notice that it was continued?
It just happened today. You can submit a letter.
I mean, he's really ill and it just happened today. It's nothing, he just, there's no way he could come here.
Last time we were here, with all due respect, you want to continue, you had one more take, one vote.
Well, you could have come, there were, you could have, you could have been heard with four people. But you chose not to. You wanted to have a...
The petitioner, the petitioner has a right to ask the board to be heard in front of a quorum, which is five people. There were not five people, so the petitioner elected to wait until there were five members of the board. So that would, that is a right that he has.
But now my life is...
And I apologize, sir.
I just don't think that's fair. You're really dumb.
Do we have another recourse? We can write a letter to the board, or...
Yes, you can write a letter.
This is my second time here, too.
Sure, you can, you can write a letter. You can submit it to Ms. Rowe in the City Hall, the clerk's office. And then it will be read into the minutes, whether you are for it or against it. It would be read into that, the way the letter reads.
Right, so this is your second time here now, and it's September 6th.
Well, it's August, Denquory Road is August 16th. 73 North Common is September 6th.
Right.
Originally, last time it was continued to 16th, originally. So it took that date off, and then it changed to this one, and it's that on police office, this is, you know.
I apologize. I think we were trying to accommodate people to get the petitions heard sooner rather than later, and that's why the majority of them were put on for tonight. We came in specifically to hear matters. This was not an originally scheduled zoning board meeting date. So we advanced, and we came in tonight so that matters could be heard. So I must apologize.
The rest of my line, there's only one or two people that opposed, there's maybe three, the rest of them are in favor. And now, you're put in a position where one person may not be able to be here. I just don't think that's fair.
Well, we're here, so, I mean, we can't speak for someone else.
I understand. I'm just...
But you said, "Mr. Chairman," should be noted.
Is there a better day?
We usually only have one meeting in the summer, for a month.
We do. We normally only meet...
And so, to try to keep it so it doesn't back up on us, because we're in an air-conditioned room, but downstairs, it's an oven. And then we like to live a little longer, maybe, in there.
I mean, now you're saying you only meet once a month, so you're the third?
In the summer, we meet in July and August only once. And we made a special, not a special meeting, but we scheduled an additional meeting.
So in other words, the petitioner who has the authority to say when they want it to be heard, like, at the last meeting?
They requested to be heard in front of a quorum, which is their right. So that's why it was continued. It is a right. So this time around, their attorney is not present, and we voted to continue it, so that he would have his petition present.
In other words, we can't, we can't force them. We can't force them to have the hearing in front of four members. We can't do that. It's their option.
One last question?
Mm-hmm.
Will the speech continue again on 16th?
We don't want it.
We have no intention of continuing it again on August 16th or on September 6th.
Where's September 6th?
It's the other, it's the property behind you that Madam is inquiring about.
Do I have a question?
Yes.
I too am opposed to the Denquory. We've come, we've got a attorney, it's costing me money as well. But how does the petitioner know what's not happening, they're not here?
I believe that the petitioner has been in communication with his attorney, who requested that this be continued before the board, because the attorney is ill. It was an unforeseeable event. The board has moved, with emotion, in its past, so those matters have been continued. And I apologize for the inconvenience for you people. We're doing the best we can, and they have been, you have a right to be here, to be heard. You can submit a letter as well. So please, we invite you to come back.
My one question is, if they know not to come, if we had known not to come, who would have been?
And I apologize. I didn't know you were going to be present.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know you were going to be present. We found out this morning. And I apologize. You know, it's, it's not like a court where there's a plaintiff and a defendant. We have a petitioner, and then people can show up, because it's publicized. We don't know who's going to be in favor, or who's going to be opposed, until the night of. So I apologize on behalf of the city and the zoning board.
Shouldn't that show a clause for me?
I apologize. It's unforeseeable.
I heard this morning, I heard, "Save some lives."
Just a question on the 73 North Common Street matter. If the petitioner doesn't show up on September 6th, do you automatically get proof to a month, or October 6th would happen?
No. No, this, all I can speak for is tonight. And tonight, there was, there was a good cause, that...
Right, understood.
So I can't speak for what's going to happen on August 16th or September 6th. But if there is no good cause for the petitioner not to be present, then we probably would act on the petition before us at that time. Don't know how we will act, but...
So in the meantime, you would recommend sending a letter, you know, with our thoughts, you know, to City Hall, you know, in addition to...
Absolutely.
...showing up the case, something, you know, they don't show up on the state, but you act before, you know?
You are more than welcome to submit something, I'd like to...
Right, just to make sure that go a seat on something.
I'm sorry, one last question, again. So this, this could go one on...
We, we try to handle the matters and move them quickly. This is...
I'm not playing the board.
Wait, this is gen, this is not usual. This is not the usual practice of the board. The three matters were continued because one attorney represents all three. So if he represented one, we'd have one continued and not three. This is not the practice that we generally have before the board, and once again, on behalf of the board, we apologize.
And assuming you know that we have a timeframe, too.
Yeah. I was going to say that, Jim, what's the timeframe?
Yeah, 100 days.
That we have to hear a case.
100 days.
100 days.
But if the petitioner requests to extend it, he has a good reason. Sometimes he's allowed to do that. We don't grant that, really, really, when people are coming down and then talk...
So would you ask for an extension?
No, there are many times when the opposition will ask for an extension. They'll ask to do certain things. They want to go out and see the property. They want to meet neighborhood opposition with the counselor. So there are many times, especially when the city counselor of the neighborhood comes forward and says, "I need to meet with the neighborhood. I have calls that are in opposition." And so it's continued, because he comes in and he represents that. Or, or a neighbor requests to continue it. So it does happen, sir.
I, I do understand that. I mean, I'm out of work.
I apologize.
I work two days, twice a month, and, you know...
And I apologize once again, and I...
Things are going on, and they need us there, and I had to tell them I'm going to work again tonight.
I apologize.
Again, it's not your fault. I'm just asking questions to find out...
So we're going to have to move on?
Okay.
One more question?
The 100 days you mentioned, is that when the, when it was filed in the paper, or the legal classifieds, or when the first hearing was scheduled?
First hearing.
When the first hearing, so 73 North Common was, right, it's July 26, 100 days. Okay, got it. All right, I'll make sure of that.
Well, and just to be fair, there can be a waiver that signs that goes beyond the 100 days.
Some do.
So...
Some do.
Okay.
Do you want to... Do you want to...
Absolutely, no problem, sir.
They'll read it. They'll read it after the... Okay, we'll take it. Thank you.
Nelson.
Who's on this?
It would be, I believe, the four regular members, members and Mr. Mendez.
Me, and these members of the... I realized at the last meeting, he's got a little side crack, but I wouldn't ask for that. Patrick Yule is here, on behalf of the property owner, Eric Obragna. And so, I hope that everybody has had a chance to review the supplemental parking plan and floor plan that I had submitted after the July meeting, for the June meeting, for that. But that provided the five parking spaces along with an interior layout of the proposed expanded garage with the studio apartment above. And I know there were some questions regarding life safety issues. And I'll just restate my position from the previous meeting. I think those are matters that the building inspector will provide guidance to us on, and will certainly amend any building plans to conform with the recommendations or the requirements of the building department. Mr. Mendez brought up a question regarding hardship. And I think, you know, I was a little, maybe, distracted and didn't fully get to the question. But what we have before us is a pre-existing lot, predated zone, with instructions on your old predated zone. So it's, it's somewhat of a grandfathered lot. The use is permitted. So I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the correct criteria for this board is to determine whether or not this change or expansion of the garage is a substantial, substantially more detrimental than the existing standalone garage without the building space above, to the neighborhood. And I would suggest that it is not. And I would be happy to entertain questions regarding that.
If I could, just a quick question, just, I want to clarify. So you're not requesting a variance, you're requesting a special permit to alter an existing non-conforming structure?
No.
Is that, or are you requesting a variance?
No. It's not a special permit. I don't think it is a special permit under zoning boards.
Well, it would be either a special permit or a variance. A special permit is...
The variance is for, because of the setbacks of the...
Yes.
So, we do need a variance. I don't believe we need a special permit, because we're not creating any use that's contrary to what's permitted by the building. It's an R4 zone. We're proposing a residential use.
Well, the special permit I'm referring to is when you are altering an existing non-conforming structure. Because that's the standard that you just described, which is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use.
But that would be for the use. We're not, we're not asking... It also applies for modifications to the dwelling. We're not, it's like two questions. One is, okay, is it a different use than the criteria or the...
No, we're not talking about the use. I was referring to a, never mind.
So, we're asking for the, for the variance, for the dimensional, from the dimensional setbacks for front, not for side yard area, because the building is too close to the property. However, it's, the use is permitted, so we're not looking for a special permit, which would be, I think, a question of use. But we are...
Well, use would be a use variance, if you were altering the use.
But I think what you're, you know, I think this standard applies to both of the variance, which is an alteration to a pre-existing structure, whether it's permitted use or non-permitted use. I think it's a different analysis if it's not permitted use. You have to answer another question. It's a little bit more discretionary.
Not sure you're correct.
But regardless, I believe the cor, the correct criteria is, you know, not the standard, you know, what's unique about this lot, that's not, you know, that's different from the rest of the neighborhood. I don't think we need to address that issue, just whether...
Well, if you're requesting a variance, then you do. Because a variance, all variances require that, that four-part analysis.
I don't believe for a pre-existing, permitted...
What was he asking?
Okay. I think you meant to be asking for a special permit to, to alter an existing non-conforming structure. That's what I think you're really trying to ask for, but I'll...
Regardless, but I would suggest that, in reviewing this application, the board consider the fact that it is an R4 zone, the use is permitted. He is adding one dwelling unit to an existing two-family. It's three units, one less than what's permitted under zoning. The lot predated zoning, it meets the other criteria for a pre-existing, a lot that predates zoning. And so I would just request that the board consider that it is not substantially different than the surrounding neighborhood. I'll answer any other questions the board may have.
I have a letter here from Michael Donovan, because there was a question about the way it was advertised, and we wanted to have a hearing from him. In response to your correspondence of August 1st, 2016, regarding the above referenced matter, I have reviewed the advertisement and the minutes of the meeting. It is clear that the advertisement contained an error regarding the existing dwelling on site, which is a two, not a one family. My review of the petition, however, indicates that the petitioner is seeking relief to alter and expand the existing garage on site, and that no work is being proposed to be performed on the existing dwelling. As such, it is my opinion that the petition need not be advertised, as the board is now aware that the existing dwelling is a two-family dwelling, and all the others or interested parties have the correct address and description of the proposed work. Accordingly, the faulty description of a one-family dwelling in the advertisement is not material to the relief being sought, and the board should feel confident in proceeding with this matter. Sincerely, Michael Donovan, Chief Inspeccional Service Department, Building Commissioner. Now, I just want you to be aware that even though I am chairing this one particular case, the chairman herself, Mrs. Brown, see, she wasn't here for the last meeting, that's why I'm chairing. But she is voting on this, because she was here for the initial of everything. So she will be voting on this. The board have any other questions? What is the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion to grant the petition.
I'll second on behalf of the board, as chair.
Motion made by Mr. Cole, seconded by Mrs. Brown, to grant. Please call the roll.
Mr. Mendez?
No.
Denied. Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Yes to grant. Mrs. Curley?
No.
To deny. Mr. Kalman?
No.
To deny Mrs. Brown?
No.
To deny. Or to deny, or to grant.
No, it goes on the issue. The next order of business is case number 9753, 405 Western Avenue, allow the subdivision of an existing non-conforming lot in an R2 general residence district, Lot A, with 2,990.34 square feet and 45 feet frontage with an existing single-family dwelling there on. Lot B with 3,591.52 square feet and 54 feet of frontage with a proposed two-family dwelling.
The petitioner could come and speak before the board?
Good evening, my name is Mike Fong, at Fong 40 Studio of Architecture, 204 Adams Street in Rochester, Mass. 02123 is for direct. I would like to request for the case to be continued, because last time we was here, four members of the boards, first of all, second of all, the vice chairman have requested for the staking, where the footing of the foundations was. I called my lance survey, unfortunately, couldn't even be able to make it on time. So if I may, please, do request for the case to be continued on September 6th.
Till the September date, which would be, I believe, September 6th? September 6th?
Who's actually on this?
It would be the...
It doesn't matter.
It's not going to matter.
So, Mr. Wood, I think you were on last time?
Well, what was on the next one?
Wait, I don't think it's going to matter, but...
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chairman?
So there's a request...
He's going to have to sign.
Yep. There's a request by the petitioner to continue said matter, in order for the petitioner to be able to stake the property, so that the board, and also probably any, anybody interested in the matter, can see what the proposed dwelling would be. Is there, what is the wish of the board?
So move the...
Continue. Second.
Attending.
So it's been motioned by Mr. Kalman to continue the matter as requested, and seconded by Mr. Cole. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And where is it going to be continued to?
The request was for the September 6th date. And I believe that we might need to sign a waiver.
You have to sign a waiver.
And one question. If my lance survey have changed to do the staking for the corner of the foundation, how can I get in touch with the board?
So if you would call Mrs. Rowe in the clerk's office of the City Hall, and then she can let us know that it's been staked.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You also need a parking plan.
Yes.
Way to hold it. You have a paper to sign.
Motion carries. The matter is to continue to 96.
And they contact me, email me if you want them out, email me.
Okay, thank you. Madam Vice Chair, I am going to turn over Washington Street, for you to chair tonight. And may I be excused?
This is continued, just to stake the property?
Case number 9757, 746, 748, Washington Street. Petitioner Omar Guerrero, owner under agreement by his agent, Antinia Nobiero, and forgive me for not pronouncing right. Allow the continued A2 assembly use in the first floor and proposed residential use, 14 one-bedroom units on second and third floor of existing building, with less than the required parking in an R5 high-rise district, Washington Street overlay district.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. My name is Paul Keating, I'm an attorney in Lynn. I represent Mr. Guerrero this evening. And you did a much better job than I could do, pronouncing the architect's name. And Mr. Guerrero is here this evening. This is the structure which he intends to rehabilitate on, at the, on Washington Street. It's presently occupied on the first floor by Fran's Lounge. The second floor has been vacant, and probably years ago, used as a warehouse. We're seeking a variance tonight from the parking regulations to construct 14 single-bedroom apartments on the second and third floor of the structure, and rehabilitate the outside of the structure, as shown here, with the material that's called, we have...
How are we talking now?
Cement board?
Yes.
Cement board. The, the basic tones and schematics of the building, which he...
My...
He met with Lynn Housing, and they asked him if they, if he could copy as close as possible what they were proposing to do at the Gateway Project on Washington Street. So that's why this color scheme and this material, which is...
Is this the Gateway Project?
That's the Gateway Project.
Has this got nothing to do with this at all?
Yeah, nothing to do with this project whatsoever.
So that's James Hany board, that's my name, Mr. Chairman. It's huge, the line.
Yeah.
I'd rather see it break, that's what they use.
Yeah. He is within 1,000 feet of the, of the train station, and around the corner from where buses pull up. He doesn't have any parking with this, but he has completed two developments, one on Union Street, and one in Baldwin, corner of Union Street. These are the people that he has brought in, and this is the type of work he does. It's all market rental units, first quality. And these are the tenants that he has gotten, and where they have come from, and they submit this to the board. You can see they're professional people, they work in Boston, they take the training, and, and the rents are quite good, better than I thought they'd be. So, it's going to be controlled construction. And open up any questions to the architects, or yourself.
Okay, I have a few, starting off. One of them was the, the color on the outside. I thought it was all extremely effective, but I see with this, there's two colors. There's not three on the...
No, two colors.
Yeah. And are you going to put any shutters on the windows? Any, anything to blitz it up a little, you know, and make it look, because this is the first one like this in the area, right? And we want to start off on the right foot. Is there going to be any rooftop units? Like, that you need to screen them, like, air conditioners, air handlers or anything? Is that all inside the building? Nothing on the roof?
No, some will be in the roof, some will be in the rear of the building.
But all I'm asking you is, would they be visible?
No.
Without, without screening, you couldn't see them?
No. It will be like this.
What do you mean, dense, like, what?
We stand this part much with these, so anybody can see. We are going to do the same in the building, so nobody can see anything around the building.
So, so what's on the top, it looks like?
In this building, on the top of the roof, is six AC units for the apartment.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm concerned if they're visible, because usually, usually they screen them. So they don't need screening.
Well, isn't that screening, which you put up top to, so you can't see the units? Isn't that pod screening?
No, it would just not be visible, because the front of the building would be...
The power pits are up, how high? Yes, yes.
All right, so that answers that. And, do you have, how many handicap units do you have designed?
No.
That's sad. Veterans or someone couldn't get a handicap unit.
It's not required in this story.
Because it lists 20 units.
But I'm saying, I'm only asking, I asked this of every...
In this building, and the top of the roof is six AC units for the apartment.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm concerned if they're visible, because usually, usually they screen them, so they don't need screening.
Well, isn't that screening which you put up top to, so you can't see the units? Isn't that hard screening?
No, it will be visible, because the front of the building will be...
The power pitch?
Oh, the power pitch are up, how high?
Yes.
All right, so that answers that. And, do you have, how many handicap units do you have designed?
No.
That's sad. Veterans or someone couldn't get a handicap unit.
It's not required in this project.
Because it's less than 20 units.
But I'm saying, I'm only asking, I ask this of everyone who brings in multiple units like this because they never seem to think about, there are veterans, there are disabled, it could be anyone that's disabled. It would be nice to see at least one or two units.
In this first project, you provide two of them.
Yeah, I understand. In this project, in Union Street, two of the units that I built, I built in this first block, and both of the units are handicapped. Even, there is only six units in the building, and I wasn't...
Yeah, that's okay, but we're talking about this one, what you can do with this one. Even if you make them handicapped, adaptable?
I'm looking at this.
And so if they want to change them to a handicap accessible, they wouldn't have to tear down walls and ocean doors, you know what I'm saying? Handicapped, adaptable, can you provide some?
I want to see what they're going to do with this. So this is what I should be looking for.
The only thing is the unit would be the second floor.
But still, they, they might be able to live on the second floor, but they could convert it and make it adaptable. I mean, you would already make it adaptable, so that it's designed so that they can turn around and make it accessible.
Large doors and things, that's what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, the door's got to be three feet, not, that's, see, there's two things. If you look up the handicap code and the state billing code, they'll tell you how to do it.
Yes, I do have experience doing that.
You have experience.
I do.
Adaptability.
I do.
And if you come in again, remember accessibility.
I know exactly what you asked me, and I'm willing to do what I can.
Yeah, all right. So, you're not, you're using James Hardy Board. Are you going to put any shutters or anything to make it look more like...
I don't think it needs shutters. I don't feel like this design lends itself to shutters much.
Well, my opinion, you vote any way you want. I'm only saying. I'd like to do that, you can do anything you want.
Paul, can we see the gateway door?
So, now, what about landscaping? What about landscaping? Could you put any window boxes like they do in the Hawthorne and sell them, they have a good set of one-window boxes with flowers down on the first area? I know there's a few trees here, but I'm talking about flowers, flowers.
We can do any, so, I think they're showing you.
They do a lot of tracks in a case like this, where there's no actual space, they go to boxes. All over the building they do that.
Put them on the ground.
Whatever. Can you keep that in mind? Twenty of flowers, so it makes the area look...
What am I looking at that's lit up at the top here? What is that?
Lighting?
Where? Where it's, yeah, all along the top.
Lighting.
I know, it's lighting. Oh, that's lighting?
Who controls those? They just come on at night?
Yeah.
What is the purpose of these? Is this...
Because in the front to this project, this is the...
So this doesn't... Similar design, similar tones of the building.
They want to show us compatible.
Okay.
They give them, give them with the city.
And this is what they're doing? This is the Gateway Project, okay.
This is Suffolk Street going up here?
We're talking about the lighting building here.
Yeah, that's Suffolk, it's Washington.
That's not, that's not offensive lighting. I mean, it won't shine on someone else's apartment. It's all covered like, you know, the, the valance outside.
Yeah, it's in order to give it a welcome home.
Of course, starts. Yeah, I agree, yeah.
But we definitely want to build this for people who live at home. And when we build these units, I hire a company, and I ask them, what is it that they build in Boston? This is their customers that I want. This is the people that I want to bring to this building. Please design an apartment for me that is specifically built, that are used for these customers. They come out with the colors, with the designs, we explain, and that's the reason of these specific colors. We didn't do this overnight, we really think about it, how to do it, and that's how we come out with these designs. And this is exactly how we're going to do all the apartments that we'll be able to do in the future.
How far away from the parking garage are you?
It's exactly 1,000 feet.
About 1,000 feet, so you can use it here. So that's...
This is chairwoman. If this building was on the other side, about the other, the other block, it wouldn't even be here because they'd be in the central business district, and they don't even need parking. He misses it by about a block.
Yeah. Those are the...
So, I, you've secured private financing?
The company, the guy that I work with is East Boston City Park, which has major interest in Lynn. And the last two projects I done, they financed, and they're, have a major, major interest in the city of Lynn.
That's good.
They believe that the city will be, grow over the next five years tremendously, based on the investment that they have in Somerville and East Boston. They have no doubt that the Lynn's will be the next city, and that is the reason they are so close in this area.
Yeah, well, I'm happy that you're doing this, and I'm all for it.
Just, if I could ask one, just one question. I noticed all the units are one-bedroom, is that correct?
Yes.
Was there a thought process behind why they're all one-bedroom and not have one, two bedrooms, or?
Well, one of the major reasons, the first time that I spoke with the mayor of you, he always concerned about the schools. And trying to bring people that have steady jobs, don't overwhelm the schools anymore. We already overwhelmed that. And that is one of the major things.
That was a request from the city then?
Yeah.
Okay. Is, is the, are the units going to be condominiums or are they going to be rentals?
They're going to be rental, but as you can see, we always build these units...
So the unit is condominium?
Everything separate, and, but we want the customer to have that filter. They live in condominiums, and they love style, which is what they like about dark colors.
How high are the ceilings?
And this grade will be 10. And that's one of the things, every time that I advertise the unit, I advertise, I advertise the units at the price high. Then when I bring the customer, if I think it is the right customer for the building, then I reduce the rent. I'd rather care to have a better customer than the price.
So you can have a ceiling fan with the, with the ceiling on high, yes?
And I always try to bring people, like you can see in these records, most of the, I got many nurses, people from hospitals. Yeah, they are professionals, that's what we do. And so far, we be able to...
When do you expect the start?
We leave in the August then?
Yeah. The first stage of the project, it's going to last eight months, and the total of the change, the three floors, within 18 months.
To turn the key?
Yeah. The way that East Boston wants me to do it is, they want me to do the two, the second and the third floor first. They want me to move the customers in, then do the first floor. That's how they want it. They want to bring value to the area.
So you're going to put a new elevator, do you?
No.
Because you got three, three stories.
Only three stories.
Oh, it's three, yeah, so you don't...
Are you tearing down the original building?
No, no, just rehabbing.
They've changed the shape, excuse me?
No, no.
Are you expanding it at all?
It's the same.
Nope. Exactly the same as the original, just different, just not...
Just this front picture here looks like brand-new, but yeah.
These are the same, they just show when you're the side.
And you got to put a brain new sprinkler system in.
Actually, this building already has a full sprinkler system, 100% sprinkler.
Yeah, have you tested, have they tested?
Yes.
Have you made any tests on the nearest, I don't know, pressure flow test? See if there's enough pressure?
Right now, it's a working business in the first floor, and they have to test it every year. It's a requirement that they...
I'm saying, I'm saying, usually the highest valve, I mean, the highest sprinkler, you have to have a certain number of pounds, I think it's 15. But you'll have to go through that. You'll have to put maybe a jockey pump on it.
We will provide, and engineer the...
Yeah, right, yeah.
Any other questions?
But yeah, it has to be a sprinkler, 100%.
Any other questions, Mr. Wood?
Is it, is it going to maintain the, the restaurant, you know, club down the first floor?
That's, that eventually is going to be divided up into three or four units. The restaurant and club will be there, but it will be a smaller, smaller restaurant and a smaller club, and he hopes to get two or three retail businesses in on the first floor, because he's going to rehab the first floor also. But yeah, it will be remaining, but it will be smaller than it is present.
Any kind of like little cafe or a restaurant?
Yeah, lounge, more modern lounge.
Nice.
Any other questions from the board?
I have none.
I, I just have a comment, that is, this is really the first private investment in that area. You've got the college, you had the city and the housing authority, and so I really want to congratulate you for investing down there.
Absolutely.
And also, the common owner, I believe is here, I mean, Mr. Collins really has been a part of the whole development for the last eight or nine years, attended all the meetings, and I'm glad you were able to find somebody to, to do the right thing for this area, right? So I want to appreciate your efforts as well.
Thank you. And he has been so... It's been a long time.
Yeah, I know.
And also, he has been so patient, and we have to hold this process for the last six months. He could just sell this to somebody else.
Oh, I know.
So, I want to thank you very much for what you do. Very kind of you.
To take a step forward for the city, it is.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? While we're in favor, I have a letter here from our mayor, Judith Flanagan Kennedy. I'm not going to read all these because we'll be here for an hour.
Thank you.
And all in great favor. She thinks it's the best thing that's happened to Lynn. And we have another letter from Lynn Housing, from Charlie Gator, two pages of how thrilled he is because he's just adding to all the wonderful things that are happening down there. And we have one from James Cowdell, EDIC. He's all, all for it. And we have one from Diane Chakoudas, Councilor Ward 5, and Richard Calusi, Councilor Ward 4, and they all are thrilled. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition after all that? Anyone in wishing to speak in opposition? What is the wish of the board?
I should be granting.
One question today, say, if there was supposed to be a lot of concrete for the building structure?
A second?
Motion made by Mr. Countan, seconded by Mr. Cole. Please call the roll.
Mr. Mendez?
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant. Mr. Wood?
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant. Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Yes to grant. Mr. Countan?
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant. Mrs. Curly?
Yes to grant.
Yes to grant.
Good luck, and thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Evening, it's a miniature.
It was fun. Thank you so much.